Are they ready?
Good meeting, how come you all? Mr. Chaney, would you like to give a prayer for us, please?
In tron God, we come at this hour of the afternoon to say thank you for your many blessings that you have surrounded upon us and given unto us. We pray, God, that you would just bless our leaders, bless our parish. Guide us, direct us. And most gracious God, we ask that you would just let us understand together we stand, divided we fall. We pray, God, that you will hold us with your powerful hand as we leave this parish and let us be about the peoples in Jesus's name.
Amen. Pleasure to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice. At this time, we have our roll call, Mr. Ju Charles Waslam, Ms. Faniqah Muse, Mr. Willie Morgan,
Present.
Mr. Warren McCray, Mr. Ryan Byrd,
Here.
Mr. Doug Watson. Okay, at this time, Mr. President, I only receive one public comment form. My first order of business is the approval of minutes from last meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll say, Mr. Waslam.
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item number two on the agenda is with Mr. Terry Sibley to present the preliminary budget for twenty twenty-six.
How y'all doing? Uh, this thing is pretty involved as y'all always see. I mean, it gets to be a big, big book every year, but I'm gonna try to go through the high points of it and just point out some things that I think as y'all looking through it, you just be aware of. One, uh, as all well know, the general fund, the majority of your revenues made up to sources, your gaming revenue and your severance tax. Those two things make up about sixty-six percent of your total revenue in the general fund. Uh, in twenty-five, your gaming revenue looks like it's gonna be up about forty-eight thousand from more than it was in twenty-four, but your severance tax is down about seventy-eight hundred. So, we're up just a little bit between the two of them combined, but severance tax has been on a steady decline for the past four or five years. And gaming has been almost just completely flat. So, what happens is that our revenue in the general fund stays almost exactly flat has been for the past four years. Uh, total revenues, we got budgeted at two-point-eight million and it's been right within a hundred thousand dollars of that for four years. That's about what we bring in. Uh, the problem is our normal recurring expenditures for the past couple of years have exceeded that recurring revenue by about a hundred thousand dollars or so. So, we've kind of worked down, we eat enough of our fund balance that we had started with a few years ago. Looks like, uh, probably by the end of twenty-six, we're gonna be down about a two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollar fund balance, which for your general fund is pretty, pretty low. I mean, that, that gets us in territory where it concerns y'all having cash flow during the year and, and just being aware that there's really no extra money there to do anything, y'all. You know, you have a lot of people all through the year asking y'all to do things and out of your general fund, I would try to be aware of that and be in a position that y'all gonna have to say no sometimes to things that you'd really rather do. Uh, we, we estimating severance tax at three-hundred-and-forty thousand and, and gaming at a hundred, a million four-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, which is about the same that we're collecting in twenty-five. We hoping it holds up in twenty-six. Uh, the only big capital project that we have in the general fund left in twenty-six is just finishing the library project cap. And that looks like that's about y'all's commitment, probably in the three-hundred-thousand-dollar range left. Y'all's commitment on that, so that, that's the biggest thing. Y'all had some capital outlays in twenty-five in the general, y'all did some perk the court. You did some upgrades there, you did, uh, the NFC building, uh, and you did some work in the courthouse, which you had a grant for most of that, so that kind of took care of that. The RB&amp;M, uh, is in good shape and we're gonna continue to do the two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar transfer from the sales tax fund in RB&amp;M. Uh, your sales tax collections in RB&amp;M is up about ninety thousand, which looks like it's gonna be for, uh, above twenty-four, at about a million-one-forty. Uh, that's, you can pretty much count on a million, million-one in sales tax, or one percent in there. Uh, we got a, we getting fund balance in there of about a million-six and we, we anticipating the ending fund balance being about a million-five-sixty, so it's pretty much holding its own. Y'all have had some, uh, capital expenditures that you anticipating in twenty-six, uh, lease purchase, I think of a tractor that y'all talking about in RB&amp;M, about a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand. So, your, uh, annual debt service for the things that y'all leased in twenty-five and that you'll have in twenty-six is about a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars on those lease payments out of RB&amp;M. Your solid waste there, again, the sales tax has held up about a million-one-forty. Your protected garbage collection is a million-one-forty, so sales tax is almost equal to what your garbage collection is. It just about works itself out. Uh, we anticipating the fund balance beginning in solid weights of about three-hundred-and-ten thousand and ending about two-forty-four. Uh, in the sales tax fund, uh, you'll have your transfer out of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand in twenty-five and twenty-six and the twenty-four transfer wasn't done, so it's going back, we catching it up in twenty-five. We're gonna do both of those transfers. In twenty-six, in the sales tax fund, you begin with about three-point-six million and we feel like you're gonna end with about four-and-a-half million in, in that sales tax fund. So, those, those are your big, uh, three items. I did one thing just to try to let y'all see, maybe can see a little bit in the, the general fund, what I'm talking about with recurring revenue and expenses, just so y'all have an idea of what I'm looking at that I get worried about sometimes. But what we did was just go back and say, these are recurrent things, things that we can count on coming in year after year. And as you can see, we, revenues are just about completely flat, right in there between two-point-seven, two-point-eight million. And our expenditure started in twenty-three at about two-point-five million, but as you can see, it's grown to two-point-nine million or so now. And what's happened is our recurring expenses have become more than what our recurring revenues are. And so, what that does is you got fund balance to take care of it, but it's eating that fund balance up over time. And that's the reason we're gonna have to watch real close for what y'all do out of the general fund. Everything else is, all y'all throw, maintenance funds are in good shape. Uh, RB&amp;M's in good shape, garbage collection's in good shape, but your general fund is just, it's an ongoing problem because you can't increase your revenue. Y'all ain't got any way to increase your revenue. And, uh, as you know, the expenses tend to creep up, utilities are more, everything's more. So, uh, we, we just gonna have to keep a close eye on that as time goes by. But we've got all the detail on all these numbers. Any of y'all that would like to see more detail of what's more behind each of these numbers, you know, give me a call, we'll gladly sit down with any of you and go through it. And, uh...
President. So, when you saying that we need to look more into the, uh, general fund, so what you, what you recommend is that we don't?
I'm, I'm, just don't want to take on anything more than what I'm saying. When somebody comes to you and say, you know, we, we really need twenty thousand dollars to do this or that. If it has to come out of the general fund, uh, I, I think y'all really would need to take a hard look because what's gonna happen is you do those things, you gonna have to at some point not do something else. So, that, that's what, I, I just want you to be real careful about taking on any additional expenses in that. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Sibley.
Okay.
Item three on the agenda, motion to accept and authorize president to sign engagement letter from Sibley and Newell CPA detailing services to be provided for the Sanlano Parish Police Jury for Years in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Mr. President, I do have, um, one of my jurors, they have asked if you could table it until they, um, they're back and present so that the full board can vote on the engagement on there.
Uh, yeah, that's fine, we can table.
Oh, yeah, the table, if you could just take no action tonight and just bring it back before the full board, once we have all.
All right, no action.
Item number four on the agenda, motion to adopt resolution providing for Camathen to return and declaring the results of the special election held in Road District Number Five of Sanlano Parish, Louisiana, Sub-Road District Number One of Road District Two of Sanlano Parish, Louisiana, Sub-Road District Number Two of Road District Number Two of Sanlano Parish, Louisiana, on Saturday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-five, to authorize the renewal of special taxes there and, and this is just a, um, resolution that we have to do to declare those results.
I'll make.
I'll say.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item five on the agenda is with Ms. Virginia Bell, with shared to present the PowerPoint presentation.
Mr. Matthews, okay, the presentation has not been, uh, reviewed by Matthew, so it's unable to be, um, be pulled up. And what it, what we were doing was, we were giving you that final report, you know, all those, uh, workshops we've been having, we had the final numbers and we wanted to just let you know, you know, what the people who were there, what they, how they voted. So, I guess we can table it until next, next meeting?
Okay.
Okay. Item number six on the agenda, a motion to approve and authorize president to sign invoice number five from Pro-Civils Construction LLC in the amount of thirty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars for the Otis and Willie road covered replacement project payable from Disaster Projects Fund.
I'll make. I'll say.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item number seven on the agenda. Yes. Item seven is the motion to approve and authorize president to sign pay estimate number four from Key Construction LLC in the amount of thirty-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars for the Water Works District Number Two, CWEF Water Improvement System Grant. Twenty-eight thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty cents of it would come from a CWEF grant and one thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and fifty cents would come from Water Works District Number Two and that will be to close out this grant, it is complete.
It's complete.
Yes.
I'm leaving.
I'll say. Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Ms., uh, Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item number eight on the agenda, motion to accept proposal from Tino's Onit Roofing in the amount of nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars for roof repair on the NFC building payable from LGAAP funds.
I'll make it.
I'll say. Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Nine, motion to accept proposal from Water Quality Solutions and Service in the amount of six thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and eighty-five cents for portable water connection at the new Audubon Regional Library, payable from PAAP funds.
I'll make it.
I'll say.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item ten from our Human Resource Department, motion to accept recommendation from the HR consultant to hire LaDestiny Porter to fill the position of administrative coordinator for the register of Otis office, twelve dollars per hour, payable from general fund, effective upon passing drug screen and physical.
I'll make.
I'll say.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item number eleven, ordinances, resolutions and proclamation. A is a motion to introduce an ordinance establishing and creating the Sanlano Parish Industrial Development Board. I think you all were even, well, I emailed it to you all in your packet on there to, um, in there. B is a motion to adopt resolution recognizing October as National Cyber Security Awareness Month. And C is motion to adopt, to opt out of deciding requirements in Louisiana Act two-seventy-nine of the twenty-twenty-five regular session. Um, if you...
The last one?
The last, yeah.
So, we did, uh, ordinance for, for the solar farm in the factory. And so, basically, what this resolution is, is us opting out of, uh, what the state put in place, or the state has some rules that they're putting in place.
Yeah.
Uh, but we wanna have our own local control so we can enforce it here.
Yeah.
So, that gives us the advantage of being able to force the zoning, the setbacks, all the stuff that's in our policy, um, in our ordinance, and, and those companies will come through the parish. And also, there's a letter from, uh, the state too, that's on the table to kind of explain, um, what the, the act was and what it talked about and then what our options is to, what a resolution. It's from, uh, Department of Conservation and Energy. So, this is just a final piece to start moving forward, uh, for those... So, I've been, um, I've been making a motion for, uh, eleven A, eleven B.
Yes, A, yes, okay.
I'll say. Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Yes.
Item B is to recognize years of dedicated service to the parish of retired employee Edward Charles Staley.
So, if you'll come up. So, so we always like to, uh, you know, highlight and recognize our employees that, that done tremendous job in the parish. Mr. Chaney worked here for twelve-plus years as a heavy equipment operator and a CBL driver. Uh, probably one of the best operators that we've had in the parish. I think the jurors can agree, uh, he's, he's pretty good on heavy equipment. He also drove the truck. Sometimes he would drive there, get off the truck, get on the equipment, do the job, load the equipment back up, get back in the truck and drive it back. So, he's a, a jack-of-all-trades and we just wanna let him know we appreciate him. Uh, he, he has officially retired from the organization after his years of service and we just wanted to do something to recognize him. So, we're just gonna present you with this certificate. We do have, uh, a warrant coming, um, but right now, we just wanna give you this token from the parish. Yeah, tell us. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney.
Thank you. Thank you, Chaney.
Okay, item number twelve on the agenda is RBM and the Public Works Department. A is acknowledge the speed of work reports that submitted by superintendent. B is update on the master plan operations. C, update regarding the Otis Willie Matthews cover project. And D, update regarding the small road project, and these all will be done by Mr. Matthews.
Okay, so I'll run through them pretty quick. Uh, as far as the report that's in your packet, it kind of outlines the work that's done in the district, uh, with the percentages and things, and so you can see there's still a lot of, uh, the weed going on as we're still cutting grass in the districts. The grass cutting has slowed down some, uh, which prompted us to kind of go back to our regular five-day work week, so we, we returned Monday through Friday. Uh, we're starting to look at drainage, COVID issues like that. So, as we start to try to improve our roads and infrastructure, we're trying to make sure that the drainage is right. So, we have to look at COVIDs, evaluate them, blow them out, also, um, checking bridges, looking at the conditions. I can say for the most part, we probably have, our bridges are pretty decent in the parish. We only have a few left that needs to be replaced. Majority of them has been replaced through the all-system program, so we're doing pretty good from that aspect. Uh, now a couple of updates, the master plan operations. What we're doing, we're waiting on the figures to add in the data of that solution permizing. We started to treat the roads, what their cost will look like so that we can look at the budget numbers and see the cost savings for that. Uh, so that project is about ninety percent complete. And, and in that, you're gonna have like your road progress based on the key functions, on the number of houses and things like that. So, as we start to look at, you know, we'll set the progress ones are more critical and go from there. The, uh, Otis and Willie Matthews Road Project is, is complete. We're gonna do a walkthrough on tomorrow, uh, to just kind of look over everything, make sure that the contractor took care of all the things on the punch list. Uh, we, we probably gonna kind of do like a little ripping, cutting on the bridge, uh, once it's complete, but it, it really looks, uh, it looks good. They did, they did an excellent job on that. So, we can check that off our list. Uh, Small Road, which is the other, um, bridge that was out, we're probably going to be going out next week with a bid packet if we have to. The, the, the state rule is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars above, we have to RFP. It may not be that much, we're trying to, to look at the expense cost to see if it's there. But what we wanna do is double-check with FEMA because to seal the FEMA funded project, if it's less than the two-fifty, whether there are thresholds. Because we wanna, we, we, since we deal with federal money, we have to check both the state and also make sure we provide the base, which is a challenge, as you know, because of the, the current shutdown. You know, those offices are not fierce, so it's kind of hard getting information, uh, back on, on that. The next project is the, uh, facility. We have the plans, uh, pretty much done. Look like around November, we're there to show you kind of the full plan for that building and go over that and we'll bring that before the board in the first meeting in November. The project for the Charlie Overton Center is about fifty percent complete. Once we get the plans done, we have to send it to the Office of Community Development and they approve it. Once they approve it, then we can move forward with those projects. So, everything we do, we send it to them, they give us the go-ahead and then we, we move forward. So, we, we think we should have those bids and post finalized by the fifteenth of November. The renovation to the OMB office, uh, is about twenty-five percent complete. Same process, we have to submit those plans to, uh, the Office of Community Development. They give us the approval for those plans and once they approve it, then we're going to move forward with that, that project. The electrical upgrade for the Sheriff Administrative Building, fifty percent complete on, on those plans. We're gonna definitely, it's based on the cost, we're gonna have to go out for a bid for, for this project. So, we're, we're trying to put the bid package together. We're gonna have to advertise for, uh, at least forty-five days, take those in, score them and then award somebody on that project. But as, as we go through the steps, we have to get ea- each step approved by OCD before we move forward. Um, the, and I think that's all under that section. No, we, no.
Done that yet?
No, we hadn't started on it yet.
My reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, when is that? How long was that?
So, I mean, what, what we still doing is, uh, we're looking to do a lot of it with, with the guys and work with a local contractor, uh, with it. So, we're looking at the costs for the different renderings. So, we have the chip seal costs, uh, we have the, the treated. We really wanna, we, we think we wanna do the treatment first and, and that'll give us a good example of how these gravel roads will hold up if we treat them. And then it'll give that base time to harden, uh, like it should before we put the overlay over. Because doing the roads, the most important thing is building that base. In the past, you know, when we have not done the base the way it needs to be done and tried to overlay it too quick, the road don't last. So, we looking to, once we do a road for the last at least fifteen to twenty years without having to go back and, and start putting money back into it again.
Okay, but, um, item fourteen is also with Mr. Matthews from the Office of the... Okay, but, um, item 14 is also what Mr. Matthews from the Office of Emergency.
Okay, the first project is we got phase one funding, about 500 grand to do the plans for the Joe LaBrach Flood Mitigation Project. And we, we have, everything's, uh, going to, was submitted on October the 17th. However, we waiting on FEMA to review those plans and sign off on it. Again, with the government shutdown, things have kind of slowed down. The good thing is this project is fully obligated, meaning that the money has been approved. Um, the total project is a little bit over $4 million. And the parish don't have to come up with any matching funds to get it done. But, but once, um, they approve the plans on the design phase, then we could go on to construction and start doing the work. But now it's a waiting game because of the government shutdown. Um, Safe Room Project, again, is another project that's funded, obligated, $3.4 million. Uh, that's also have a global match, so the parish don't have to come up with anything. It's approved, but what we did is we had to kind of put a location in. And now we're waiting on FEMA to approve that location so that we can move forward. So it's, it kind of gets frustrating because, you know, that, that shutdown really affect these federal funded projects, but it's just a waiting game. So once they give us the go ahead, we can move to the next phase. Um, last thing is, we had a group that attended the Los Angeles Emergency Management Conference on last week in Lafayette. And so I do want to thank the staff that, um, took the time to attend and, and go to those sessions. So there was a a couple of key sets, sessions that we went in that I want to talk about. One was critical infrastructure, which that's protecting, um, the, the critical systems in our parish, the roads, the electrical grids, um, IT systems. So we talked about that. The other thing is we got a lot of updates from the Hatted Mitigation Grant Program. Again, because it's been a federal program, everybody's wondering, you know, when is the funding gonna be approved? What's the next steps? How long are we gonna have to wait with the government shutdown? And so they kind of answered as many questions as they could. Uh, but the state is also, you know, trying to wait and hear back from them because a lot of folks are not in their office right now. School safety, uh, was another good session. Uh, you know, the governor kind of put school safety under, uh, GOSEL and under the Homeland Security Offices in the parish. So we kind of play a key role in making sure that schools have resources, schools are, uh, are trained, uh, and have a good plan, emergency plan for these incidents. Uh, we, we, we do know that the school is funding a school resource officer right now on the campus to help out, um, through Mr., um, Morgan. We have been working with East Baton Rouge Parish Sheriff Office to secure a few vehicles in the parish. We have a truck, two trucks, uh, one that our, our custodial staff use to get around to the buildings. We have a truck that we use to carry equipment around for the RBM department. And I'm excited to let you all know that we were able to secure a truck for our school resource officer. And, and all this, uh, it doesn't cost the parish anything. So we didn't have to pay any funding, uh, for these vehicles, which is a, a great help. So that's, that's some good news that, uh, came through this week. The last thing was AI in Homeland Security. AI is the biggest thing right now. And what we're trying to do is find out how do we use this latest and greatest technology to leverage what we do. To help us, you know, figure out the best thing to do to prepare for storms, um, the best ways to set up shelters, anything that we could use AI to get the information to help us get better, the better we can serve our citizens. Uh, and that's the end of my report.
On the resource pickup, you know, when you gonna plan on picking it up?
I'm gonna see, um, tomorrow if they're available.
It's ready.
Yeah, so we're gonna go over there and, and, uh, uh, pick that vehicle up. Uh, the proposed location is in the industrial park. So you have that facility there on higher grounds. Again, putting it here would kind of be putting in the flood weight. So we wanted to have a location that, you know, once we do kind of get moving, we can get out and get in, uh.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, um, Ms. Bell, um, she just informed me, she said that Mr. Matthews, you shouldn't have the presentation right now. And she would like for us to go back to her item on the agenda.
Let me double check.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just want to make sure that we got all the details making to you. Because this is, this is a lot of work, this is a lot of energy put into this, and we'll check. And CPAC, because CPAC, it's now the ones who spearheaded all of this. And they helped with all the documentation and, uh...
Did you, you send this?
Yeah.
You've had to, you've had to give me rights.
May not open.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sending it back to you, but if you look at your email, you should, they give me, uh, rights to. The slide. Should've just got an email back from you.
Uh...
Question on access.
It's not coming up. I'm wondering if, uh, that, is the internet on here? It's not. Unless it's moving kind of slow. That's the last email I got at that time.
This is it that you sent me?
This is it? Okay.
Okay, you know what? So is it coming from her?
It's coming from her to me, then I'm forwarding to you.
Yeah, but, but she, she
Not gonna work like that.
Yeah, yeah, she's the owner of it, so
Sure, she's the only one.
She need to send, uh, the link to me.
Okay.
Because it's her slide.
Well, we're gonna have to table it then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would have to come from her.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, just, just table it to next time.
We'll put you back for next time.
Well, he still couldn't open it because he said, uh, he's got it.
Okay, item 15 on the agenda, motion to acknowledge receipt of monthly budget actual comparison and financial reports received or reviews prepared by Sibley and Newell CPA.
Second. Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Yeah.
16 is the motion to approve requisitions as presented by person agent.
I just got one problem on two on there. I was telling the fire department, uh, the position 4732, 48279. It's, I don't wanna hold him up, but Devon, can you check and see what the fire officer, he didn't do a good job.
Just, uh, is that bull dog?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He just rode on there and that's it, I mean.
Yeah, I, I can double check.
One of them is 4,901, it's, uh...
4,095, 96?
Yeah.
Those two requisitions.
Yeah.
4738, 47382 and 48279.
I'll make it.
So do we so do we pay it or do we hold it up until we found out exactly what's going on?
We're starting with zero, but
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely get clarity, get it to you.
Y'all wanna make the motion to pay out with those two or?
If you want clarity of it, Mr. Morgan, make it hold it up.
I'm gonna do what is going on with the base. Fire department, so I don't wanna hold him up. Or more vibe.
Yeah, is it, is it, uh, is the is it an ambush?
It's ambush.
It'll say that emergencies coming.
So basically, where they done? And all of them. We came with those.
We can
And did work.
It's done the work.
Hold those two?
I thought it was a purpose of, of a recognition first before you do the work.
I know the one 4,095, 96 that had down there is the estimate.
That's the estimate.
Yeah, this one.
This one is the estimate, the 4,095, 96. They should put it first there.
Yeah, so one of the emergency problems was they had to get done because they needed.
Right.
So, but that one I can check out.
I'll make it. I'll give you a second.
I'll say it.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Item 17, motion to approve fuel man report as presented by person agent.
I'll make it.
Fuel man, I'll say it.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item number 18 on the agenda, the motion to approve check for an after the last regular meeting amount of 257,673.31.
I'll make it.
I'll say it. Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray? Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, before we adjourn, we have some FYI's. Due to the Veterans Day holiday, the next Polyjury meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. The deadline for submitting items for the November 12th, 2025 meeting is 12:00 PM on Monday, November 3rd, 2025. The Louisiana Let's Lay the Artists Workshop will be held November 5th through the 6th, 2025. This will be virtual, but all of my employees here in the office will be taking that training mandatory. So we all be here in office, but we'll be on the training those two days. Um, GOSEP Compliance Monitoring Visit will be December 2nd through the 4th, 2025. MGO Connect Training will be December 10th through 12th, 2025. Registration is now open for the 2026 Polyjury Association Convention, March 30th through the 6th, 2026. I will need your names to submit to me. Also, um, I'd like to announce that on 5:30 on this coming Thursday, we'll have a trunk or treat in the park in Greensburg. At this time, Mr. President, there's no other business to bring before the board. I entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
I'll second that.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.